I will call the August ninth, 2023 meeting of the Open Space Board of Trustees to order. And we'll start with a roll call. John?
President.
Michelle?
Here.
And Brady?
Here.
Oh, great. And I am here as well, so we do have a quorum. I thought we'd do a quick agenda check. We're going to have a report from the Junior Rangers prior to public comment. So if anyone has signed up for public comment, that'll be somewhat later in the agenda. But before we get to the Junior Rangers, we'll do approval of the minutes. So are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Page one.
No, no corrections, but I just wanted to ask, Megan, that I see a new section in there called Return to the Board. And just wondering whether that is going to be a new thing, or is this because we had so many open comment and actions last month?
It happens when there are clarifying questions, then you go to public comment, and then the board deliberates after that. So that section will only exist when there's an item with public comment.
Okay, thanks.
Are you okay with that, Michelle? Okay. So page one, hearing or seen none. Page two of the minutes, are there any additions or corrections? Hearing and seeing none. Page three, any additions or corrections? Hearing and seeing none. Finally, page four. Great, I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Great, we'll do a roll call. John?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Brady?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so the minutes are approved unanimously. So Dan, I think if you want to lead off the Junior Ranger Youth Ranger Program update and report.
Yeah.
Great.
A honor to. This is an annual event for us in which we get to hear about how the summer season went with our Youth Rangers and our Junior Rangers. And in fact, this week is the last hurrah, the last week. Our second crew of Junior Rangers are wrapping things up. They'll be celebrating their season on Friday. The Youth Rangers are wrapping things up as well. And so it's kind of really appropriate to turn things over to get a report out on how the season went and to hear from some of our, some of our Junior and Youth Rangers. And I'll start by introducing Natasha Steinman, who's our Youth Service Learning Manager, who will kick things off.
Awesome, thank you. And hopefully folks can see, see me too. Great.
Natasha, before you-
Where do you want me to look?
Before you start, I want to just say, I was remiss in not saying one thing, and that is that the Open Space Board annually looks forward to this every year. It's one of the highlights of the Board's meeting schedule. And we're very pleased that there's so much support in the community. And all you guys out there helping, it makes a big difference. And we're very pleased to hear how things went.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Thanks, everyone. We, we also appreciate the year every year, and we look forward to it. And it is a special honor for the Junior Rangers and Youth Rangers also to get to speak to the Board. So be sure to give them your thanks after they, as well. But we are just going to start with some high level updates. We're going to try to go through slides kind of quickly, pass the computer down the line, and just give you an overview of the summer and what we've been up to. And then we'll pass it over to the Junior Rangers. So slide. Awesome. Thanks, Megan. Great, so like I said, we'll just touch on the master plan areas that we contribute to with this program. I always give a little short hiring update to the Board. And then I'm going to pass it to Hannah for some project and crew highlights, and then pass it to Arian and Melinda to talk about the Youth Ranger Crew. And we'll come back for questions too, if the Board has any. Slide. Great. So first, master plans. We, and you can go to the next slide. We work with a lot of different work groups at O S M P. And we're trying to build out and work with every single one if we can. And so we primarily, of course, the Trail Crews work with the Trails Crews. So we build new trails guided by past and future plans, like the North Sky Trail, which Hannah's going to talk about. And we contribute to reducing the trail maintenance backlog with a lot of maintenance projects. We also help out the Forestry Crew. And this year, we actually increased the time that we are with the Forestry Crew to twice a week, which they were barely keeping up with us. They're doing a great job. And working with them, we get to help preserve and restore the important habitat blocks. And with a bunch of other work groups, vegetation management, wildlife, ecological restoration, and we help them control invasive species. And then slide. We also work with, the Trail Crews actually also work with the Rangers in addition to us having a Youth Ranger Crew, and agricultural team to enhance enjoyment and protection of working landscapes. So this year, we were working at least once a week, helping to remove old fencing to increase those habitat blocks and increase vistas and view sheds. And we got to do one project with the Education and Outreach Team, helping to clear a pathway so that we can have public programming at the White Rocks property, which is a really special place on Open Space. Very inspiring for the public to engage with, and was really cool for our Junior Ranger Crew as well. Slide. And then, of course, these ones are the obvious ones. We connect youth to the outdoors, right? We hire 112 youth every summer to work outdoors. We welcome diverse backgrounds and abilities, not just age, but also race and ethnicity and gender and all different identities into our program. And we hope to inspire environmental literacy and new involvement in O S M P by giving this opportunity to so many of Boulder's youth. Slide. Great, and I'll pass it to Hannah.
Thanks, Natasha. So this year, the year of 2023, we focus mainly on projects that have a lasting impact. This is really for two reasons. One is because we think it's an important value of the Junior Ranger Program to engage in projects that are going to be long lasting and beneficial to the community long term. And we've also found that it's really important for the Junior Rangers to have a sense that they're going to be impacting the world around them and having a lasting say on what stewardship looks like for the years to come. We've also been prioritizing mental health, especially in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as the many other major events that have taken place in our community over the last few years. And we've really focused our curriculum on helping to teach and facilitate resilience and the skills of self advocacy to try and promote wellness within our youth populations. Next slide, please. Great, so up here, we have some examples of some of the work that our Junior Rangers have been doing. On the far left, you'll see one of our crews working on the new Saddle Rock Trail, which has been an incredibly popular project for them this summer. In the middle, you'll see another crew chipping trees with the Forestry Crew. This is an important part of wildfire mitigation and is also a fan favorite among the Junior Rangers. And then on the far right, we have our first session Leadership Crew, learning how to manage different projects and collaborate together. Next slide, please. Other ways that we connect to the community are through our partnership with Nature Kids Boulder, our Leadership Crew, which I just mentioned. And this is a specialized Junior Ranger Crew that focuses on building leadership skills among its Junior Rangers. We also have the Climate Crew, YSI Junior Ranger Crew's Career Day, which is a day dedicated toward exposing the Junior Rangers to the various careers and educational pathways that can lead them into further involvement with stewardship after their time with Junior Rangers is up. And then also Sustainability Week. Next slide, please. I'll be passing it back to Natasha to go over hiring.
Great, thanks, Hannah. So just like I do every year, and slide. I just give you a quick update on hiring. So this year, we had 174 applications for 112 positions. That's about on par with our normal hiring year. And as per usual, we had a group of really highly qualified applicants, which made that decision all the more difficult. We are, this is our third year as a partner of Nature Kids Boulder, like Hannah mentioned. And so through that partnership, we've been able to connect with new communities, new families, introduce this program, and even introduce Open Space to people who otherwise may not know about it. And that allowed us to hire a diverse group of Junior Rangers that really creates strong teams. And as I've mentioned, like in more detail, other years, we try to balance offering as many positions as possible. So that's part of why we break our sessions up into a June session and a July session, so we can offer more positions. But we also really want to hire returning staff as well, returning crew lead staff, but also Junior Rangers, because as Hannah mentioned, it gives more leadership opportunities, and then we can really build those leaders in stewardship. Slide. So yeah, continued efforts towards equitable hiring. We also, these three fixtures on the left are from our Nature Kids Boulder programming series called Junior Ranger Exploration Days. And we actually host these in the summer while Junior Rangers are working so that we can have some of our Leadership Crew, Junior Rangers, lead these public events that families of all ages are welcome to attend. And we basically show them a day in the life of a Junior Ranger and a little bit about the work we do. And the kids have an absolute blast, and the families have an absolute blast. And we do those programs bilaterally, so in Spanish and English. And so this was the second year that we had a bilingual program coordinator position, which was super helpful for that. Slide. And then this will, you will recognize, because this is actually the same slide as last year, because I don't quite have 2023 data yet, but I will by the end of the year. But just to show you one piece of the demographics of the Junior Ranger Program, right? We also track gender and a few other things that the city tracks. And just trying to provide transparency around our efforts to make sure that we're including every single community in Boulder and that every Boulder youth has access to and awareness of this program and is encouraged to apply. Slide. Great, passing it back to Hannah for project and crew updates.
Awesome, thanks again, Natasha. Next slide, please. Perfect. So our first highlight is the Youth Service Initiative and Junior Ranger Partnership. We have partnered with the City Boulder Parks and Recreation Department with their Youth Service Initiative, which is a group of middle schoolers who have the opportunity to work as Junior Rangers twice a week. They get paid for this time, they get exposure to what stewardship looks like. They get to work alongside many of our Junior Rangers. And it's an important experience for them to not only gain awareness regarding our program and what they can possibly become involved with once they enter high school, but also to help represent young people who are historically underrepresented in this field and in opportunities like this. Next slide, please. Our next highlight is our project on North Sky. We have had two to three Junior Ranger Crews out there every week throughout most of the summer. And this has been an incredibly important project for the Junior Rangers. It's allowed them to take a lot of ownership over the stewardship that they have been engaged in. It's allowed them to see firsthand, a very visible representation of the impact that they're having on the land. And it's allowed them to collaborate alongside one another on a scale that can be difficult on some other projects. Next slide, please. The other project that we wanted to highlight is a causeway that we have contributed to building on Left Hand Trail. And this has been an interesting project to have the Junior Rangers get their hands on because it's very technical. And so has helped to expose them to a new level of collaborating with one another, of learning how to manage projects, how to work with one another, and continuously take ownership over the various components of what can be a really difficult project. Next slide. Next, I will be passing it off to Arian to introduce the Youth Ranger Crew this year.
Hi. My name's Arian Hampel. I'm one of the Park Rangers. I actually started as a Junior Ranger and had the opportunity to work as a Park Ranger now. And we started the Youth Ranger Program back in 2017. And the Youth Ranger Program is really based around trying to figure out ways to help young people find their hearts and passions becoming land stewards. And we've really been able to provide a great opportunity for our Youth Ranger Crew to really participate in a variety of different kinds of careers. And that can help them in both their academic and professional pursuits. So we're just going to kind of give a snapshot of some of the modules that we do with the Youth Rangers, and I'll pass it off to Melinda.
Hi, my name is Melinda Markin. I'm a Park Ranger with Open Space, and I've been here for six years. Arian brought me on board to help with the Youth Ranger Program in 2018 when I was a seasonal ranger. So like Arian said, we'll just give you a snapshot of some of the many things that we do with our Youth Rangers, all geared toward the goal of exposing them to what it is to be a Park Ranger and also careers in natural resource protection. So one of the favorite things every year is search and rescue. We have the, the youth crew meet with Rocky Mountain Rescue Group. They learn basic first aid, they actually got certified in CPR and first aid. So then, after they get the basic skills, we throw them in the field with actors who have fake injuries. They get to go find lost actors and treat their, their injuries. Next slide. We do work projects with them every week. In the upper left is a picture of our work project at Cowood, which has been a fun experience for us to go to every year since the Cowood Fire. So not only are we doing a work project, but we're also teaching them about a fire ecology. Two years we've done fire mitigation, so removing trees that are growing too densely togethered. And then one year, we did ecological restoration in the actual burn scar for Cowood. And then something new we did last year was we partnered with the Esoterra Farm on the Hartnagle property for O S M P. And we did all kinds of farm projects, like spreading mulch, spreading compost, harvesting veggies, pulling weeds, lots of pulling weeds. So it's been a really fun project for us last couple of years. Next slide. We teach them a lot about wildlife ecology, including bats from our Ranger Supervisor Burton Stoner. In the picture on the bottom is one of our Youth Rangers who is experiencing a snake from the Center for Snake Conservation. So the, the herpetology expert comes in and teaches our youth about all kinds of local snakes, reptiles. And then in the upper left is a picture of a bear that we got to, that visited us on our overnight trip to the CU Mountain Research Station. So the Youth Rangers actually got to see a real life example of wildlife hazing because the bear was getting too close to human habitation, getting too accustomed to humans. So the bear was hazed, and they got a really real life lesson in human bear conflict. Next slide.
Now that isn't a native snake, right?
Not that one. Not that one.
You're sharp, Dave, you're sharp.
I'm paying attention.
Some of the other programs are, we have them meet with search and rescue dogs of Boulder County. We have them give back to the community by teaching a children's fishing program. So we go to Sahil Pond, they teach children ages four to 10 how to fish. And then as, as Park Rangers, what some of what we do is defensive tactics. And so we also teach Youth Rangers defensive tactics. And this picture on the right, Ranger Extraordinaire Dave Gustafson, who's also a defensive tactics instructor, is, is having them practice their new skills. Next slide. So this is a snapshot of some of the many organizations we partner with. Because unlike the Junior Ranger Crews, we don't spend a week or a summer working on one thing. Every single day is different because there's so much involved in being Park Rangers. So whether it's teaching them about law enforcement with Boulder County Sheriff's or Boulder Police Department, or whether it's the Center for Snake Conservation or Rocky Mountain Rescue, Flight for Life, we partner with a lot of different agencies. And that's really one of the keys that help, that helps makes our program successful. You'll see on there the logo for Mental Health First Aid. Like Natasha said, for the Junior Ranger Crew, we focus on mental health for the youths. We've noticed it's become really important since COVID. So all of our staff are trained in Mental Health First Aid, for people who work with youths. And we incorporate mental health programs into the summer, such as mindfulness in nature activities, and also an O S M P staff member led a mental health in nature activity as well. Next slide. Couple of our partnerships that we do, like I mentioned, the CU Boulder Mountain Research Station. From my connections, from my master's research, we've been going up there since 2018. I lead an Alpine Ecology hike, and then in 2019, we started doing work, work projects. Last year, we implemented a new program where we stayed overnight, and it was really successful. So we did that again this year. We go up the first day, we do a work project, we stay the night. Then the second day, I lead an Alpine Ecology hike. And it's very different, it's very fun to get up above tree line and learn about our local habitats a little higher up. Next slide. And like I mentioned, with the law enforcement aspect of being a Park Ranger, we, this picture is from a day when we worked with the Boulder Police Department, and particularly the bomb squad, which is always a big hit with the crew. Next slide. And if you could press one more time for a video. We've been partnering with Thor Nature Experience for many years. And another really cool thing that the youths get to do is bird banning. And so partnering with Oak, they get to contribute to 80 years' worth of research in bird banning and wildlife research, which is pretty cool. Next slide. So we find every year that this program has impacts on our crew beyond what our goal is. And I'll read these because it's kind of long. First one says, "I am extremely thankful for this program. It nourished my soul and opened my eyes to so much amazing work in natural resource management. Because of the first aid and emergency medicine trainings, I found that helping people in need is something I really want to do in the future." And we, now that we've been doing this program for, since 2017, we've been able to watch our first crews graduate high school, graduate college, and go into their careers. So in this picture in the left, upper left, I'm posing with Fiona in the middle, Brooke on the right. Fiona and Brooke were both crew leaders in 2021. Fiona came back in '22, Brooke came back this year in '23. And Brooke actually got her start in, on her career path in the Youth Rangers, in the Mountain Research Station overnight, or the hike, rather. She got connected with a research project there as a high schooler, which was really instrumental in getting into research programs in college, which then gave her a huge leg up on applications for grad school. And she just arrived at Berkeley where she's pursuing PhD. In the bottom picture is Chris, who was in the 2018 crew. He was a crew lead in 2019, and our, the Youth Ranger Program helped him realize his passion for wildland firefighting. So after he graduated high school, he, he's actually finishing his forestry degree at C S U. And he's going to go into his career in wildland firefighting next. Next slide. So the last few things I want to say about this program is that in 2021, we were honored to receive the Blue Grandma Award from COSA, the award for Outstanding Visitor Engagement Program, which we were very excited about. Then the next year, which was last fall, Arian and I presented at COSA about Youth Rangers. And one of the audience members was actually the Director of the Room Field Open Space Department. She invited us to present to their Board of Trustees back in the spring. So we did that, and they're trying to emulate our program and implement their own youth program in Room Field as well. So it's been a wonderful experience. And with that, just to wrap up our portion of it, the Youth Ranger Program really tries to offer opportunities for youths to connect with each other and connect with nature while learning about careers in natural resource management and building positive relationships with law enforcement. So now, the moment you all have been waiting for is to hear from the youth crew, the youths themselves. Next slide. So we have two awesome presenters. Next slide. So we have Rin from Youth Rangers and Daylin from the Trail Crew. And I'll pass this down for Rin to start.
Hi, I'm Rin Zimmerman. I've been a Youth Ranger for two years. And every second of this program has been just truly amazing. I've learned so much, whether it be about myself or just possible career paths. We've learned how to defend ourselves, save other people's lives, and save our planet. We've learned how to teach other people through the fishing program. We helped kids and adults alike learn how to fish. And that was a really unique, amazing experience. We learned how much Rangers contribute to our environment and how important they are. Because before this, I didn't know anything about Rangers. But now I see everything, and it's just such an amazing experience to be able to know all of these things. And this program has helped me solidify what I want to do and my interests by going down all the different paths that the Rangers have to walk, from firefighting to law enforcement, to education people. And just all of the activities and things that we did helped me really solidify that I want to go into law enforcement. And the biggest things to me that helped were going to the Boulder Police Department and meeting FBI agents, and just seeing all of the different sides of those things. And it helped me clear up my path, because honestly, without this program, I wouldn't know what I want to do. I would be completely lost. So I am forever grateful to this program and the people who have made it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, my name is Daylin. I've also been a part of the Junior Rangers for two years. This program has become something of great importance to me, and I think I'll carry all the memories I've made with me for the rest of my life. Being a Junior Ranger has impacted how I think about life, how I interact with people, how I work. And it's given me so many cool opportunities that I'm forever going to be grateful for. I remember my first year, I was really, really nervous. Was the work going to be really difficult for me? Was my crew going to be not nice? I wasn't sure, but on the first day before we even went up to the trails, all my worries were just completely washed away because the environment of Junior Rangers was just amazing, and it felt so friendly. And my crew leads were there whenever I needed help. And all of my crewmates were so interesting and different than me. It was just such a diverse group of people. And throughout the first session, I had my fair share of moments where I was confused by people's reactions or how they work. And that was actually one of my favorite things because being able to form connections with people who are absolutely nothing like me or who have grown up completely different than me is an opportunity I'm super thankful for, especially growing up sometimes with more enclosed communities. Being able to actually branch out is just a really beautiful thing. And I remember also in my first year, there were, as much as majority of my memories were positive, any ones that I have negative ones of, like having a crewmate who was a second year when I was a first year, who I felt like took over work a little bit and didn't always leave room for me to contribute. I took that to heart in my second year when I decided that I didn't want to make any of the first years feel the way that I did. And I really wanted to help them also learn and just have it be a really enjoyable experience. So it's like, no matter what this specific memory was, I feel like I learned something new every second that I was in the program. And one thing that I also, like being able to contribute just to the community of Boulder that I've grown up in at my age, or even feel like I'm making an impact at all is amazing because it's really hard to feel like you can make an impact on your own, especially when you're young. So being able to is amazing. Like this year, for my second year, I believe my crew was the first crew to work on up at Saddle Rock. And I know that every single person in my crew was so excited for that because that was something that we could go back and visit in years and be like, we started that. We really took the first step into that project. And that just feels really inspiring to me because it makes me feel like anywhere in the future, I can also feel like that again, no matter my age. And also just the, I feel like the way that the crews are made is, it's just, it's almost hard to describe, like the people are always different, and your crew leads are always there to help, but you just learn so much from people. And I've been in the Leadership Crew two years, and I wouldn't want to change anything. It was different each year, just a little bit. So no matter the fact that I've done it twice, I learned something every single time. And my crew leads just did it, like showed me that you can lead. And my crew leads just did it, like showed me that you can lead successfully in different ways. And you can contribute to the world and to people in different ways. There's not just one path that you can take. And I just, in general, I know I've said that I learned a lot so many times, but I really did. I feel like I learned about so many new people. And I learned about trails and environment and things that I feel like I never would have learned before. One thing that was exciting is I feel like I got over my fear of bugs because of this. But just things that I will hold on to forever. And just the community was absolutely amazing. And any feedback I got from my crew leads, I'll hold on to for any job. And sorry if I am rambling at all and maybe there's not a specific point, but really what I'm trying to say is that this program has just sculpted so much, even though I've only been with it for two summers. And this program obviously helps animals and organisms and people in a literal sense. But I also feel like there's something so intangible about this program that just impacts everything in such a beautiful way that's so hard to describe. And this program has made me decide that I feel like my dream is to someday impact people the way that this program's impacted me. Thank you.
Awesome. We can take questions now, if anyone has questions online in person?
Do you have any questions or comments? Well, I do. I think this is an example of one of the most creative aspects of the Open Space and Mountain Parks Program. I've known Arian for a long time. And I think he and the other rangers that are participating really exemplify, you know, the substantive work that this program is doing. So thank you, thank you all very much. One thing I was going to ask, if you can take, and I don't know who's best to do this, but if you can take just a couple of minutes to tell us nuts and bolts about how you assemble crews, how many, you know, kids are on a crew, how you determine, you know, work projects and kind of give us a sense of, you know, when you're out on the ground, kind of how you're working. I think that would be very interesting and enlightening for some of us.
Sure. I'll start and you all can join in. Okay, great. Um, I love that question. And that is challenging to sum up in like 30-ish seconds, what we spent several months doing. But yes, um, so yeah, we hire, like we said, 112 positions. We have five trail crews in June, five trail crews in July slash August. And then this year, the Youth Ranger Crew operated second session, so July and August. Sometimes they're in June, this year they were in July, August. We offer all youth applicants an interview. So we enter all 172 of those applicants, or we offer them an interview. Usually, almost 100% of them show up for an interview. And then we rate all of the interview questions, waiting heavily for teamwork, collaboration, some of those foundational skills versus the hard skills, right? This is a first job, this is an entry level job. We try to teach them all of the skills that they need to know to build trails. But we do want people who are going to be team oriented, focused on growth, that type of thing. And we also try to hire enough returners that each crew has several returners. So depending on the year, that's between two to four returners on a crew of 10. Because those, those returners are, like Daylin said, are so instrumental to setting the tone for the crew. If you have a second year who's not sharing the work or not describing things well, then that sets the tone for the whole crew. And if you have somebody like Daylin, who's kindly taking people under her wing, right? That sets a different crew culture. And so part of the success of the program is having those returners know what it feels like, show up and be that positive mentor. And so we do try to put, we try to sprinkle a couple across every crew for both sessions and then fill up the rest of the crews with first years who have never had this experience before. Projects?
Yeah.
I'll let Hannah do that because she planned our projects this year.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit on projects. So we collaborate pretty heavily with Bo Clark through the Trails Program. And then beyond that, with some of the other crew leaders who are in our other work groups. And we try to find a balance between what is going to be most useful because we have, you know, a group of 10 Junior Rangers plus their two crew leaders, which is, you know, a little bit more substantial than a lot of, or in terms of numbers than a lot of our other crews. And so we can get a lot of work done. So we try to balance prioritizing what's going to be most helpful with things that are, we feel like are going to be useful for the Junior Rangers in terms of developing their skills and collaboration or project management or, you know, allowing them to see an interesting project that they might not otherwise be exposed to. So the way that we've kind of gone about it is, you know, asking Bo and other work groups for the things that they need to get done. And then from there, kind of choosing those projects that feel like they're most conducive to youth development.
Great. So there are about 10, 10 kids per crew?
10 Junior Rangers.
Two crew leaders?
Yeah.
Generally kind of throughout, across the board?
Yeah, so every crew this year has-
With the exception of Youth Rangers.
With the exception of Youth Rangers. Yeah. Which is 12 youth. Has 10 Junior Rangers plus two crew leaders.
Great. And I don't know, this year, and I'm going to get to you, Michelle. This year, I know posed some issues working outside, last year did as well. So safety wise, how are we doing as far as, you know, having all these kids out on the ground? Working well, it's either hot or rainy or, you know, whatever?
Yeah, totally. I'm happy to take that. I would say that heat is becoming an increasing issue, right? It's, it is hotter during the summer than it's been overall. I was also a Junior Ranger when I was in high school and it was hot, but maybe not this hot. So we have focused a lot, I mean, we focus every year on it. But last year, it was real hot. And it was hot early, so that was hard for everybody's bodies to acclimatize to. And so this year, we did a lot of preventative measures. And I'm happy to say we had a lot fewer illness related to heat this year. So we did a great job with that. And we also actually ramped up our ergonomics training. So just body mechanics, proper body mechanics, using the right muscles, the strong muscles and not your back muscles and, right? Junior Rangers can like go off about all the details. But we started doing ergonomics and like strength based training for 30 minutes every single morning, which does take away time from projects. But we discovered that it significantly decreases like overuse related injuries in particular because it's just a four week session. And so the ramp up, ramp, the intensity ramp up is like intense. And so doing those 30 minutes every morning really helps us prevent injury. And then, yeah, the weather is challenging. The fact that we have new employees who maybe don't always understand what their bodies are doing is challenging. And we give a lot of safety reminders. We do a safety talk every single morning with all of our crew leads and then they share that with all of their crews. Yeah, it's, I, I'm really proud of our record this summer. We do have a lot of reports, but that's because we've taught all of our team to report everything. So it's everything from like a small splinter, a bee sting, you know, all of those types of things. And I, and I think it's the severity of the reports, not the number of them, that I'm really proud of. So, yeah.
Great. Arian, do you want to add anything?
Sure. I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the projects that we try to put together are really Ranger related. So we had the opportunity to have David Gustafson come out with us and really help us with a lot of Ranger focused projects related to fencing and putting up fencing in some areas where we've seen a lot of like, you know, trail breeding and wildlife safety. And so really our work projects, we're focused around working with some of our partners as well. And then just coordinating that kind of work back to like forest fire mitigation projects as well.
Great. Michelle, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, thank you. I have a question for staff. I don't know if that's Hannah, Natasha, or you, Erin. And then I also would like to invite Rin and Dylan to, to answer a question as well. The, and I'll let you think about this one. But if, if there were one, was one thing that you could think of this summer that you're most proud of? What is it? So move that one over for a second and no pressure if you don't want to answer that. And then I just have a question for staff. Were there any improvements to the stipend program related to equipment? I think last year, what I heard was that they get equipment after the fact and they get reimbursement for things like boots after the fact, rather than on the front end and, and how that could be an impediment for somebody who is resource constrained at home?
Let Natasha answer that.
I'll answer that one. Yes, I'm so glad you asked that. Actually, hiring was so long ago, I sort of forgot about that as far as, but no. Yeah, actually this year, because of Workday, this is one of the beauties of Workday, we were able to hire folks on, well, we restructured a little bit like how we start the season. And so when we do paperwork night, which is usually in May, and all 112 Junior Rangers show up to get all of their paperwork, we help train them on what, what the paperwork is. Because they fill out the same paperwork that I do, like to start this job, right? It's a lot of paperwork. So on that day, we're able to make that their first day of work for pay. So it's actually in May and we pay them for that hour-ish that, that training, paperwork training and filling out the forms takes. And then as a result of that being their first day of work for pay, we were able to give them a stipend in the month of May or early June so that they would have it before they actually started work. Few paperwork challenges on my, on like the Workday end, but overall, that allowed them to have that resource ahead of time. And people, yeah, that was a huge bonus.
Awesome. I'm glad.
So would any, any of you would like to respond to Michelle's question on what was your, what most favorite or?
Or just the one thing you're most, the one thing you're most proud of, of this summer? Can be small, can be big.
Okay. Um. No, I answered kind of like what I'm most proud of. So like I already said, I was in the leadership crew twice and our crew leads sort of gave us feedback twice in my session because it was four weeks long, like pretty detailed feedback, which I always really appreciate. And what I like about the leadership crew specifically is it's like I get to learn how to try to be a leader, work on leadership skills with other people who also want to lead. So it's like you have to find a good balance. And one of my crew leads said that I was a leader among leaders, which I really appreciate. I'm most proud of that. I'm most proud of on, just like an overall scale, how well we as a crew worked. I feel like we got all of our work projects done so much faster working as a team than we would have if we worked individually. We always finished ahead of schedule with work projects. We had this one up at the Mountain Research Center where we were cutting up old pipe left from an old research project and we finished it in like less than an hour. And there was a lot of pipe and we had to cut it up into 12 feet, yeah, 12 foot sections and then carry it down the hill. And we finished it super quickly. And instead of each individually grabbing a pile, we created a chain and passed it down the mountain. And that made it move so much faster. And we all just connected on a really intense level. And so we all still constantly talk and we all make plans. And I'm just really proud of how well we work together, how well we connected. And just the maturity that we all had and just the changes from last year, I was reading.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
I think I'd just like to wrap it up by saying that I've been involved in this program. Generally, I get to usually welcome the crews and say goodbye to the crews. And sometimes I'll come up and see how they're doing on a, on a project. But this year, I actually am very close friends with a family who, 17-year-old was part of the Junior Rangers. And I would see him a few times a week and the smile on his face when he came home every day, like, "North sky today!" Or, "Working out, I got to do the forestry and pulling weeds." I mean, he, it was like, on paper, I knew it was an awesome program. I could see in your faces that it was an awesome program. But to actually be involved day to day with somebody who was coming home from the program and to see the excitement just really was elevated the amount of appreciation I have for the program. So thank you all.
Yeah, thank you very much. We really appreciate it and it sounds like it was a good summer, so that's great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can I just make one quick little addition? It's okay, no problem. I just want to say, I'm really impressed with the program. I mean, if we had another hour, I'd have probably an hour worth of questions, but I'll spare everybody that. I spent almost 12 years working at Outrebound. And I have to say that there's a lot of residents here that, you know, taking a group of people who don't necessarily know each other, putting them in an unfamiliar setting, giving them hard things that are meaningful to do together, brings out the best in people. And I just think that what you're doing here is really special and undoubtedly is having a big impact on the land and on the future careers of, of everyone involved. And so just congratulations on a great program.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Thanks for coming in person.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
Okay, I think we're at the public comment time. And Sam, well, no, before we do that. So there's one item on the agenda that's listed for public participation. And that is a request for undergrounding conduits or trenching for conduits and disposal requirement for that project. And so if you have comments on that, if you would hold them until that time, that would be great. You are free to comment on anything else during public comment. And Sam, do you want to run through real quickly what the rules and procedures are?
Yes. Okay. So I'll just start by reading the, the rules here. So the city has gauged, it has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff and board commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences and political perspectives. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimonies shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by. And individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testament, testimony is permitted online. And I don't see any participants joining by phone. So I'll go through those instructions if I see anyone join by phone. For everyone else, if you have not signed up to speak in advance, you can raise your hand by either clicking the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen or you can click the participants box. It'll pop up, you'll click the three dots at the bottom right and then select raise hand. And so with that, I will move on to the public comment section. We do have one member of the public signed up to speak in advance. And I will get started with them. So first, we have Lynn Segal signed up to speak.
Just let me jump in real quick, Sam, before, so we'll do a three-minute time requirement for that.
Perfect, thank you. Yes. So I'll get started. Lynn, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yeah, I was just at Dan Ellsberg Memorial. Another whistleblower besides Caroline Miller. And memorializing the Magus- memorializing the Nagasaki bombing. You know, you guys, if you got somebody, you work as a team, you're just talking about the Junior Rangers and how you work with leadership, that's what they were talking about and how they work together. How is it that you failed to work with Caroline Miller? You failed. She's your colleague. I just watched these meetings, many of them. You work with her and you attacked her. It's stunning to see the irony of how you deal with the Junior Rangers and how you don't do that in your own lives. You know, my dad took me to plan Boulder meetings thirty five years ago and I became introduced to open space and the values of Boulder thirty five years ago. And I'm ashamed of this city now. I'm ashamed of our open space department and our open space board of trustees. I couldn't believe the thirty first of May meeting where Caroline was basically attacked. The audacity of Brady to say, I think it's time for you to just step back. What if he told that to Dan Ellsberg? Oh, just step back. Good God, people. Unbelievable. You know, the biggest thing to happen to Boulder is CU South. And you think you've got responsibilities, you are responsible for the open space charter to maintain maintenance and, and operations and capital improvements. And you know what that costs. You know what, Michelle, because you said, oh, Caroline missed the financial meetings. But Caroline didn't miss the real financial thing that's going on and that's CU South. CU South is doubling the population of Boulder and doubling all of our debits on this open space. And she was watching out for that and she heard something that was not right. It violated open records, speech, public speaking and you slaughtered her for it. Shame on you.
Thank you very much, Lynn.
Okay. And we don't have anyone else signed up to speak in advance. If you'd like to speak, you can raise your hand. I'm not seeing additional hands.
Great. And we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and go on to matters from the board. And so the first item on that would be any comments or questions that we have on the written information. And that would be the update on the seasonal leash restriction for protection of bears. And I think, Dan, is a staff member going to say anything?
Well, I think the lead author for the memo was Heather Swanson. If you have a question or if Heather would like to.
Is she on?
She is. She's in a conference in Wyoming, but able to join us online. Hi, Heather.
Hi there. How are you?
How are things in Cheyenne?
Oh, they're good. It's actually beautiful up here. Green, green and damp and seventy eight degrees. So it doesn't really feel like August in Cheyenne, that's for sure.
So Heather, can you, can you real quickly just kind of go over some of the the critical parts of the memo for us? We kind of set the stage.
Sure. Yeah. So I know this has been a conversation that has been going on for a couple of years. And I'm sort of the, the new person involved, but back in twenty twenty, when staff was measuring dog on leash compliance, they found that seasonal leash restrictions were the place that we were seeing much lower compliance than, than we saw overall. And so at the time, that information was sort of brought forward and the board has had a couple of different memos and written items come to them since then. The last of those was last August. And so when the on-leash restrictions for dogs, the seasonal on-leash restrictions for dogs for the purposes of bear protection went into place last year, a number of actions were taken to try to encourage higher compliance. And those included changes to signs and additional signage using sort of the A-frame signs that sort of sit on the side of the trail. Additional ranger patrols, having E and O staff on site to engage and talk with dog guardians and kind of just a broader effort to get the word out about those closures. And so also at the time, it was identified that, that probably there was some other information that would be helpful to have regarding those closures. Those have been in place for quite a long time. And, you know, things have happened on the ground since then. Certainly the twenty thirteen flood had an impact on drainages and associated habitat. We've had some trail reroutes and changes and where trails intersect each other and those types of things. So last fall, our plan was to embark on a fair, not a detail, but an on-the-ground evaluation of bear habitat in those drainages to see if those regulations still sort of lined up with the conditions on the ground. And due to other emergent priorities, what we ended up doing was more of a desktop level GIS analysis of, we had highly suitable habitat modeling from the West TSA, we have veg mapping in those areas to take kind of a high look at that. So that's part of what is presented in the memo is sort of what came out of that, of that analysis. And so there were certainly things that were indicated in there as far as where habitat might no longer line up exactly with where the regulations start or end or where the regulations start at a point that doesn't really seem to make sense on the ground right now. And so one of those was the area at Chautauqua over in the baseline and Blue Bell Baird area. And that, that was one that was both habitat related as well as just being difficult for, for visitors to understand on the ground. The, the restrictions kind of started in the middle of a trail segment and ended in the middle of a trail segment. So we're planning to modify that. It's, it's a fairly on-the-ground minor change. But we'll, we'll make the regulations line up with trail junctions rather than kind of starting and stopping in the middle of a trail segment. Certainly also makes signing much easier. So that's what's included in this memo. Also for this year, we are continuing the enhancements that were started last year. So additional signage, additional E and O and ranger presence. It was, we made, we made sure that the word went out on our field notes emails and a press release. It was highlighted on social media. So really just trying to raise the profile of those going into effect for the season so that visitors are, are more likely to know that that's coming and then know that it's in effect when they actually get out on the trail system. So moving forward, we, those, those regulations go into effect here in about five days, six days for this season. And through this fall, we're going to be doing the on-the-ground habitat assessments that we were hoping to have done last fall. Because some of the other areas where the regulations either were not quite lining up with changes to trails where they had been rerouted or where there had been changes since the flood. Those are things that we really want to confirm on the ground. Most of our GIS data predates a lot of those changes on the vegetation mapping. And so we need to kind of get out there and, and see on the ground and ground truth for that before we further evaluate any of those other spots that, that changes may make sense. And, you know, there, there may be other changes that are indicated just in looking at the West TSA and dog regulations. That, that is not something that's been scoped out or included in the work plan at this point. So the department will continue to talk about whether there are priorities associated with that that will be, will be looked at by staff. You know, either in twenty twenty-four or in future years. So that, that's kind of the status where we're at now. Was there anything else that you were hoping I'd cover, Dave?
No, I think that was very helpful and thank you very much. That I think was good context. I guess my sense before I ask other board members for any comments or questions is that it's a two-pronged approach where we were doing a habitat suitability assessment to determine, you know, what's, what is significant or, or used habitat? And then looking at what makes sense on the ground as far as regulations to both protect the habitat and protect the bears when they're using that habitat. And I, I have mentioned to Heather a couple of days ago that I am somewhat discomfited by the, the lack of compliance with the seasonal leash regulation on many of those trails that have a seasonal leash requirement for, to protect the bears and bear habitat. And so I'm hoping that that as our focus increases, that we can increase that compliance rate from around sixty percent to the more normal rate throughout the system, which is in the high eighties. And I, I guess if, if we can kind of keep updated on how all of those are going, that would be very helpful. So are there any, I'm going to go to Michelle and then I'll come to you. Michelle, why don't you start off?
Thanks. Yeah, I had emailed a question related to this topic earlier. Yeah. So I know last year when we were talking about this, this subject, John Potter had said that there was going to be some in-depth analysis last fall. But to recap, you were going to do that, but then some other emergent priorities came into play. And so you were not able to do that because I know that everybody wants to protect the bears and the habitat, of course. But there's an important question about what needs protecting because of the reroutes. And I'm thinking about like Skunk Canyon, which was massively rerouted and I'm not sure why that was not included in this sort of desktop GIS analysis. Or, or, or is that something you're not going to do and it's, you're saving that to, to do, to analyze when you do the, the broader analysis? And when can we get a sense for when you're going to do that broader analysis? Is it, will it be this fall? I didn't quite catch that earlier. And because I, I just think that the, the, the rules are confusing, so it's extremely hard to comply. And, but then also the, the compliance is around protecting bears where we've rerouted trails and there's no real understanding of the conflict, if there is still conflict in those areas. So I think that would help with the confusion and also improve compliance.
Yes. So the intention is definitely to look at places like Skunk. So the commitment is all the way from baseline down to South Mesa Trail where we have trails along streams. And there are a number of those in addition to Skunk. You know, Doughty Draw, Homestead, a number of those. And, and those are the ones that we really, before we were to recommend any changes, want to make sure that we have the on-the-ground data to be sure that what we're looking at is what really makes sense. Because the last thing that we want to do is make a change that then still doesn't make sense just in a different way than it did before. So we just need to gather some additional data to make sure that any changes that we're proposing are what, what really makes sense given the habitat on the ground. So the timeline for that is definitely fall. You know, we're definitely coming into the season to do that. So I know the wildlife team is working on scheduling that in along with pellet plots down at Spring Brook Loop and Prairie Dog Mapping. Fall's a pretty packed timeline because Prairie Dog Mapping is, is kind of an all hands on deck effort in the fall. So we're working on making sure that we have sufficient time scheduled in this year to get out there and do those on-the-ground evaluations. So, you know, I, I would suspect that through our work planning this fall, we'll be identifying a timeline of when we would look at that information, even though it'll be collected this year. And, and making any decisions or recommendations about those changes. And if there's anything else that we want to look at related to this.
And how soon could we be looking at data like that? Or would we have to wait until next August to hear about the findings?
Um, I, I, I think, I think we'd likely be looking at the data earlier in the year. Obviously if something were to be implemented next year, it would need to be by August at the latest. So, you know, I think ideally it would be earlier than August. Obviously board, board schedules and staff schedules sort of dictate when those things end up coming to you. So I can't really speak to when it might actually be scheduled. But we, you know, as staff capacity allows, the first half of the year, be working that into the work plan.
Great. Thanks, John. Do you want to?
Sure. As, as a frequent dog walker on open space, you know, I even find the, the rules confusing around seasonal leashing. And I think what you're doing here is a great step towards making it more clear in terms of having it start and end at trailheads. So I, I think you're going in the right direction here in terms of hopefully increasing compliance. And I guess I'll, I'll just ask for clarification. I think I already got the answer, but reading the memo, it sounded like, you know, you're taking a comprehensive look at all of these trails and looking at changing the rules. And then I read through it and saw that, you know, we're only looking at two trails right now. And it sounds like you're, you're going to be back later with a look at some other trails as you have more information.
Yeah, I, I think that's definitely the intention.
Okay.
Great. Brady?
Yeah, Heather, thanks for some, I just reread the memo and I'm not sure if it's in there and I missed it, but how much enforcement action do we usually take on these seasonal, seasonal closures and, and what's our availability? In, in terms of like having rangers on the ground to like kind of provide encouragement and, and, and to be that in-person rather than the passive sign to kind of remind people of what our expectations are.
Yeah. And I, I don't have an answer on the actual amount of ranger presence. I do know that last year they made an effort to prioritize spending time in the seasonal leash areas. You know, that obviously has to always get factored in with all of their other, sometimes emergency priorities that they have to attend to. And Dan, I don't know. I mean, we could probably come up with the information about how much time was spent out there, but I, I certainly don't have that at my fingertips.
I know, starting last year and again this year, at, at the Ranger All Staff Meeting, which is held on the first Wednesday of every month, there was an announcement that went out that there will be enhanced patrols again on the seasonal leash areas. And then the E and O staff at the Ranger Cottage, along with volunteers, they do make it their a priority during the last half of August and into September to get up there and to have those. Now, from an E and O standpoint, it's educational efforts, not an enforcement effort with that staff, but just to have conversations, to build awareness. And so they do make an enhanced effort up there. Brady, I, I don't know off the tip of my fingers if we have like data and hours of what that enhancement looks like, but I could.
It's okay. I'm just curious. I, I know I didn't give you guys the heads up on this. I'm not expecting perfection. I'm just, I'm just curious how you think about it. And are we writing tickets on this? I mean, it's tricky and I'm just curious about, about that part of it as well. Do we write tickets or is it really just kind of verbal?
Well, I mean, dog infractions is always our most popular ticket. But I would also say that our rangers always approach everything with discretion. And if they're in an area that they know is inherently confusing or it's the beginning of a closure or and they have a, a conversation with a visitor, they would, they all, they would certainly use discretion on where they felt that landed in terms of a warning, a conversation or a citation. That's typically how they're trained to.
So they have a lot of discretion to try to, to meet the, the response to the context. That's good.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
One thing we might do, Dan, is if maybe we could get later this fall, or you know, later, an update on kind of, you know, the presence that we had out, you know, on the trails in this regard and kind of how, how that went, which would be earlier than Heather's, you know, the kind of the more data-driven, you know, habitat assessment efforts. We could get some idea maybe relatively earlier on as then we move into, okay, here's some things that we're going to look at for next year.
That sounds good. And the other action I'll take is I'll put a preliminary hold sometime in late spring, early summer to have it, another update like this on our efforts too.
Right, right.
Heather, I assume you're going to use those, those tent signs again this year?
Yes.
Okay. And then you'll try to get people out there before because it's, it's hard when on August fourteenth, they can, people can do one thing and then August fifteenth, they need to be doing another thing. And then on August, and that's, that lands on a Tuesday this week, this year. People may not get out there till Saturday. They ought to also be out there Saturday and educating. and educating people as well because it just is not in people's calendars like it is ours.
Yeah, I think seasonal regulations are definitely one. You know, I I don't think it's a mystery why we see lower compliance. It's it's difficult for people to to understand.
And is there a social media education around this this year? Do you know?
My understanding is that it has been highlighted and will be highlighted on social media.
Yeah, it was a main feature of our August field notes that went out and we could certainly repeat that story at next month. I think there's about ten thousand subscribers on there. And it was a highlighted story last week or two weeks ago on that.
Yeah, and I think People like Fidos pick it up in their newsletter as well because I know they have a newsletter that reaches dog guardians. Sorry, Dave.
That's okay.
Yeah, we can reach out to see what we've done and working with Fidos too. Sure.
So if I just sum up real quickly, the board summit, I think if we can get, you know, pres- presence focused out there as much as possible on the ground. We think would probably be heightened the effectiveness of the information. Thank you very much, Heather. That was very helpful and we'll look forward to further conversations.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And hope we have a good bear feeding fall this year.
Thank you. Me too.
But not on dogs.
But what? Not feeding on dogs or visitors. Okay, if there are no other comments on that, the other item we had was to talk about our upcoming retreat. And I just wanted to lead that off that conversation and let the board know that I have asked Michelle and Brady if they would be willing to take on the leadership role for the subcommittee for planning the retreat and they graciously accepted. And so what I thought we might do in a couple, well, a few minutes, maybe five, is just talk about some ideas that we would like to have on the table for consideration for retreat topics. And then maybe set a schedule or some deadlines to for board members to get other ideas or suggestions to the committee. And then we, the committee and Dan have to decide on, you know, a date and kind of all the logistics. So if we've got some suggestions for that, we need to let the committee know those as well.
Yeah, Dave, I can just let Brady and Michelle know that over at least the last year or two, we've developed a little bit of a rhythm and a system for collecting ideas and we developed, we put it together on a spreadsheet. And then we use that spreadsheet when we come forward at the use of the subcommittee level and then even at the full board level to then prioritize and winnow it down and that sort of thing. So yeah, conversation tonight certainly, but then we can do some of this online where we could put out a suggestion of please provide us your suggestion by this date. Who's here? Who who to give those to? And then we'll start collecting it through a spreadsheet.
That sounds that sounds good. Are you guys okay with that? Approach?
Yeah, that worked well last year. We I know we have to run that all through you, Dan, so that we are not communicating with one another one another directly about our ideas and do not accidentally get in violation of Cora rules. And or and but yeah, if if you're still up for collating those, Dan.
Yeah, I'll certainly be your partner throughout this the next two months on logistically and any other support you want from me, I'll I'll be our liaison to staff. So you know, certainly I also I could even start with a email to you all at the end of this week or Monday to get us started and make and give you the tool we used last year. And if you all want to make some tweaks to that before we, you know, before we deploy it, we can start there.
Okay.
And I included the the summary. Everyone got the summary from last year's retreat just to kind of, if you're interested, make sure that if there are any kind of remaining things that we want to cover this year, that those are on the table for consideration so that you have some sense of, you know, if there were any loose ends coming out of last year, if we want to tie those up this year, what those might be.
Dave, if I could just make a comment here slightly off script, I guess, but you know, I've never been on one of these retreats, so I'd love to hear from Dan and the other board members very briefly, if you feel comfortable, like, let's just say we have this retreat and it's really successful. We just we feel great about it. What are what are one of the things from everybody's perspective that we will have achieved, either very specific or kind of general to make a really successful retreat? So as we're putting the agenda that we can kind of begin with the end in mind here.
I'll start by giving you one concrete outcome that helped us throughout this year as well as more of a generalized continuing education for us all kind of one. So one concrete thing that came out of it is that we were instead of looking three months ahead, that last year was the first year where we actually had a you know, a vision for what the year looked like in terms of topics coming forward. And so we we spent about an hour over working lunch to help kind of determine subject matters. I started by putting together from a staff perspective, here's a rhythm for what we're what we're thinking. We needed business we need to take care of in the year and what quarters those agenda items might land. And we provided you all with a year of look ahead last year at the retreat. So that was the first time we did that. And from a staff perspective, it was super helpful for us to be not just looking month to month or even quarter to quarter, but actually having a fairly a high degree of confidence of how the year looked. So that was a very tangible outcome that came from the retreat. One of the things of being on the board that we all try to do collectively is just enhance all of our awareness and and subject matter expertise on on open space. So as you all get involved in and sort of subject matter detailed decision making, you have a broad context to make those decisions on. And the roundtable we did, we invited some senior staff. I believe we had five or six senior staff who have been with the organization for many years. And we just had a general sort of roundtable discussion to pick their brains, if you will, of what trends have you seen over the last twenty years? What do you think the state of our grasslands are? That sort of thing. And that kind of casual conversation, I I thought the board found very helpful. I can't point to a specific outcome this year of what resulted from that. But I just felt that that type of sharing between staff expertise to the board was really well, was really appreciated. So those are just two examples from last year's.
I and I agree, Brady.
Great, thank you, Dan.
It's informal. The retreat is more of an informal setting where, you know, we can roll up our sleeves and and really kind of get into the meat of several issues. And it's not so structured necessarily as, you know, a regular board meeting, that sort of thing. So it's it's just a little more intimate opportunity for conversation between staff and board, which I as Dan said, I think was very helpful that that roundtable setting, I think all the board thought worked well and was a good idea. And we might want to consider that for some of the board work this year as well.
I think John led a session too that was kind of more about working well together as a board. So this is your chance too to review your sort of rules of procedure, which is sort of the technical aspect, but then the cultural aspect, you did a start, stop and continue exercise.
Retrospective is what I call it at work. And it was really good because I asked both staff and the board, like, you know, what what's working well that we're doing? What should we stop doing? Having meetings that go till midnight, I think, was the the number one theme of that section for both board members and staff. You know, and everyone was able to kind of like, you know, say what was going well that we should keep doing. And everyone was able to kind of share feedback in terms of what we should start and stop doing and keep doing.
Yeah. So typically, Brady, that board culture, that board working together. As you've typically been some part of the retreat in some form or fashion, it's different every year. It's a little bit different. We've typically, over the last two or three years, have specifically opened up what we call our Rules of Procedure document, which I think has about six different chapters or articles to it. And and there's always an opportunity to open that up and say, hey, we need to provide more clarity in how we work together, how meetings work, how our external communications. And so there's an opportunity to do something more formal like that as well.
Right.
I find that Oh, yeah, I find that that document for the rules and procedures for OSBT is is helpful to like we treat it as a living document and it's a good opportunity for us to say, hey, do we, the new board or, you know, the new members of the board agree to these roles? And, you know, should are there tweaks that we need to make? And we have found in at least the last couple of years I've been involved that that tweaks were needed and and were made. I'd like to propose that we do that again this year and tackle the question, the difficult question about board attendance. And and how that might impact how we communicate our expectations of one another. And if those expectations are not being met, how we remedy remedy them in a way that is swifter and serves the community better.
And I'll piggyback on on that, Michelle. That's a that was a good observation. I just want to remind the board that earlier this spring, we talked about having doing some work amongst ourselves on working together more effectively and having that as kind of a facilitated conversation. And so if people think that that would be helpful or or good, you know, that that has been on the table. We have postponed any final decision. And some of the the issues that were involved there are are no longer relevant. But if people think that that work would be helpful, we can certainly look at maybe planning some time during the retreat to focus on that.
And of course, one of the first duties of our the subcommittee and myself working with you is to kind of determine time and date. And so maybe we could do an email chat chat early next week, just about for you two, you know, what are we looking at? What kind of dates do we want to propose to the other trustees to then try to? We'll have a new trustee that will be appointed tomorrow night. So next week, we could actually start reaching out and getting some dates on our calendars. So.
I did notice that in our three-month outlook in our our packet, on October eleventh, it's listed that we'll do an OSBT retreat follow-up. And so that just seemed that assumed that we actually had completed it by then.
Yeah, that it was total an assumption. Those three-month calendar outlooks, especially the third month is of, you know, an assumption. I typically just I look back at the typical dates of when we held the retreat over the last few years and it has seemed to be like a late September, early October type of thing, but certainly it's there's no rules of engagement date that we need to adhere to.
The follow-up will correspond to whatever date we decide to do the retreat on. I will say the October meeting, we're probably going to exceed our our time requirement. So that's going to be long and substantive meeting. So we may not want to add a whole lot of other things on that agenda.
I might propose that we you know, depending on the schedule of our new trustee, that we combine our field trip that got delayed and kind of mix it up with some in-person field trip along with a sit-down retreat. That's my
I love that. I love that.
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah, assuming the field trip might be a little bit more than two hours, just because if we're at Posack, we'd likely be out by two eighty-seven. There are some of their larger restoration sites on Boulder Lake Creek are 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 quite a few east. So in order to hit some of this, it just might be more than a typical two-hour field trip.
Right. I miss I may have misunderstood, Michelle. I thought you were talking about a field trip in addition to the one that we're doing jointly with Boulder County. That the field trip would be an element of the retreat schedule. So it wouldn't be
Either or. I mean, I guess I get the if if we could do it as part of the Boulder County, great, because we we want to knock that out. We want to get that done. Or if there was a field trip that we had been wanting to do in the next six months, combine that part of it. And so either one, either topic. It seems like doing it with the Boulder County would be harder to coordinate, but the the I know we had a list of things that we wanted to do.
Right.
Approach.
Well, that's great. Yeah. So we'll look forward to hearing what you what you come up with.
Thanks, Michelle and Brady for helping out with it.
Yes, thank you very much. And again, as we have in the past, we ought to encourage all board members to have some role or participation in in the retreat. So feel free to, you know, kind of work through whatever you need to to ensure that that can happen. So thank you very much. So if there's no further conversation on that, Dan, I think we're ready to go to the item for a public hearing.
Yeah, and I'm gonna turn things over to Bethany Collins, our real estate senior manager very shortly. But Dave, this may be a familiar item for you and maybe just you. I'm not for sure, but in late twenty nineteen, early twenty twenty, reran through a through the disposal procedures. The right to use open space lands for an IT project to install broadband. And at that time, there was very specific language within the motion language that referred to how that would be done installed and it would be installed through boring. And what we have since learned now that they've put it in place on some of our open spaces through boring, as they got further up into the system on two locations, they have realized that boring is not a technique that they can utilize. They need to actually use trenching. So we ran that through our the CEO City Attorney's Office, and they actually said because of the specific language within the motion language, that it would be best practice to amend the that disposal decision from a couple of years ago to include the ability to do trenching as a technique as well. So it's either lesson learned of how specific to you make this motion language, or this is great practice and we want to come back to you in full transparency and say we've got a new technique proposed. So to work you work you through this proposed amendment, I'm gonna turn things over to Bethany.
Can I just interject really quickly? Dan, is is since this is something that we've it was in the packet, we've all read it. It was something that was deliberated and discussed quite a bit previously. Just to be clear, is the only change the open trenching? Is that the only difference between?
There's two, two.
Maybe Bethany, I don't mean I don't mean to I don't mean to cut. I just I just want to say, you know, if 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 that's all we're doing, maybe this could be kind of a brisk process.
Yeah, we're certainly open to that, but I I would say that there's two changes. One is the realization that trenching needs to be a technique on the table as well. And the other is is that in one of the location, we are anticipating some an additional utility ask in the same location. And so also in this would be whether the board is comfortable allowing for another conduit to be placed in that trench to anticipate what would be a further utility request for undergrounding of of a utility line in the same location. So there's yes, it's the trenching, but there is also in the memo. We
Another piece of conduit that'll be in there.
Yep, we specified in the original disposal ask that it should be limited to one or two conduits. And what we're saying here is that we could place an addition, an initial conduit to anticipate a future utility need. So two, two addition, two different differences between the original disposal. Bethany, did I get that right?
I I was gonna say you've done the presentation. Do we have any questions? No, I'm just kidding.
I don't know. Maybe that maybe Brady you're hinting at.
Well, I just, you know, it sometimes in other bodies, there's unanimous consent. And if it's just one of these things where we're like, hey, we have to have a public hearing, let's let's get present it. But if we're all in favor, and then this is something that that has been that that we all agree on. I mean, to me, if if the if the situation has changed, we need to open a trench and you're And you, you want to be smart and put a conduit in there so you don't have to reopen it if you want to throw something else through there. Boy, that sounds really smart to me and I don't need to know a whole lot more if this is something that previous boards have deliberated over. And I'm not trying to steal anyone's thunder and I understand technically this is a disposal and technically we should have a public hearing, absolutely. I don't want to undermine any of that, however, if we're all in agreement, I, maybe we could uh make this quick, that's, that's all I'm, I'm, I'm saying.
And leave this up to the chair.
Well, I will ask Bethany, um, is there any specific information that you need to provide the board? Uh, in order for us to make a determination on the request?
That's maybe not reflected in the memo.
Right, right.
Um, I, I, I don't, I don't know that there is, the presentation is quite short and it is um mostly, you know, to, to have some visuals. Um, of what was explained in the memo, um, the potential for the additional conduits is, as Dan explained. Um, is both actually for the IT broadband project, the ability to uh place, you know, again, it was very specific to two conduits. And they're seeing that they need potentially up to four conduits to go up to the Enchanted Mesa tank and tower to serve a lot of the infrastructure up there. Um, and again, while the, while the trench is open, if there um is a, a potential future state for additional um utilities. The idea of putting empty conduits that could later be pulled through, all of those utilities would require, um, you know, uh, uh. To go through proper permissions and proper permits and potential disposal processes and things. But then the infrastructure, the conduit would be in the ground, again, if this is all determined to be cons- you know, feasible from a constructibility standpoint. As you, so, so gracefully said, Brady, if you're going to open a trench, can we do what we need to do and put, uh, put everything in one trench at one time? Um, so that's, that's what these, these two, uh, the, the two um amendments to the previous action cover.
So Bethany, is there any uh further disposal requirement or need for this board to determine?
No, uh, disposal, as, as you are quite familiar with, has to have, you know, a, a public notice ahead of time, which has been done. It has to have, you know, a public hearing be- before board um to both recommend and approve. Um, and recommend, obviously approve and recommend the city council approve, and so the next step would be uh to go on consent. If this is unanimous, to go on consent to city council.
Okay. Uh, then I would uh. Welcome a motion to approve.
Well, we need to go to a public.
Oh, no, right.
Open up, any more clarifying questions, public hearing in the back?
Right, uh, yeah, I'm getting ahead of myself. Forget the motion, are there any further questions of Bethany or staff uh before we go to public comment?
Uh, who came up with the word trods? Um, I was absolutely in love with that when I was reading the packet.
I actually, Bethany did not have that in there.
Did not have that in there, but we internally.
Suggested, Bethany, these are sort of, this is one of those roads that we use as a trail, right? And I said, let's use trods. It's, it's a, it's a technical trail terminology that I decided warrants use.
You don't, you don't hear it a lot.
I want you to know that John is going to approve this no matter what because he's in love with that word.
Right, yeah.
Uh, so if there are no further questions, uh, we will open it up to public comment. And Sam, would you run through quickly what the procedures are for that?
Yes, um, we do have one member of the public signed up to speak in advance. Just as a reminder, um, you can raise your hand, I don't see anybody joining by phone, so you can raise your hand by either clicking the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Or clicking participants, the three dots at the bottom right, and then you'll see an option to raise your hand there. So, um.
So we'll go three minutes on this.
Great, that sounds great, we'll just get that timer set up so that we're ready to go. Okay, and uh, the member of the public who signed up to speak, we have Lynn Siegel. Lynn, you should be able to unmute yourself now. And Lynn, I'm still seeing you muted. Um, so if you could go ahead and unmute yourself. And I'm not seeing her unmuting herself, but. So maybe we'll come back, so if anyone uh would like to. Uh, raise their hands to speak, you can raise your hands now. Not seeing any hands, so I'll check in with Lynn Siegel one more time, Lynn, you should be able to unmute yourself. Okay, not seeing it.
There's someone in the chat, if. Should we check that before we?
Yes, I'll send a. A Q, uh, and you should be able to use Q and A if you are um participating this evening. So please use the Q and A if you're unable, if you're having any technical difficulties. I think that was just Brady.
Okay. Great, uh, so seeing none, uh, we'll return it to the board. Uh, for any further comments or questions, discussion? Seeing none, now I will entertain a motion.
Um, all motion that the Open Space Board Trustees. Uh, approve and recommend that city council approve an amendment to the OSBT and council approve use of certain city of Boulder open space lands. By the city of Boulder Innovation and Technology Department to permit installation of subsurface conduits via open trenching or boring. As part of the city council approved community broadband project and also allow for possible placement of additional conduits to limit impacts associated with potential future utility installation pursuant. To the disposal procedures of Article twelve, section one seventy-seven of the City of Boulder Charter.
Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, any further discussion on the motion? We'll do a roll call, Ben, uh, John?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, thank you, uh.
Thanks for having me, Bobby.
You can give the presentation to staff tomorrow if you want.
I am most disconfident by the fact that we didn't.
We'll have lunch and learn at noon tomorrow at the cafeteria, everyone's invited. Um, Dave, I'll just throw this out here, it seems like we'll have a little bit of a shorter meeting tonight, we have about, I would say forty-five to fifty minutes left. But this would be the break time if we wanted to take five minutes, or we could plow through, you know?
Uh, let's do five-minute break.
In the recording right now, we're good to go.
Uh, Dan, so we're ready for matters from the department, so take it away.
Yeah, we have one matters, a program update on our signs, a, a program area that then. Uh, dovetails into seeking some uh board feedback on one particular time, uh, sign that has a high degree of uh profile without in the community. And I'll just start off before I turn things over to Jeff, just to quickly uh say that um. This was, well, we brought the science program update to you about a year and a half ago, so we'll try to be fairly brief on that. And um, this is one of those opportunities that we really value, the board's feedback being the liaisons to the community. Because from a manager, management standpoint, you know, we probably would have the full authority to go ahead and say, we're going to make a change to this sign. But this is one where we kind of said, timeout here, this is kind of a high-profile sign. Let's use the trustees as that sort of gateway into the community to get their pulse on what we're thinking here and if you have any feedback for us, so. Kind of that opportunity to use you all uh as a bellwether of, 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 in a management approach we're.
I appreciate that.
We're intending to make, so without, I'm going to turn things over to Jeff to set the scene.
Thanks, Jeff Haley, Deputy Director for our Trails and Facilities, and I'm joined by Craig Brasky, who's our Senior Manager for our Science and Graphics Program. And yeah, Dan teed up a really nice introduction. We'd like to just, you know, the Signs work group really is a very unique team within our department, as you all probably know. Uh, we literally serve the whole department in, in certain ways uh with our signs infrastructure. And in many ways, we are kind of that first touch with the community when they're visiting the system. They'll see a sign or read some information through one of our um, so through some of the infrastructure. So it's a really important team, a great group that you'll hear about with the presentation. And um, we, as Dan mentioned, we have provided information in previous years. But with Brady and I think John, you're relatively new since then, uh, we thought it'd be good just to do a very, very brief overview of that. Um, and yeah, this is kind of an informational item, um, no approval or motion or anything like that. Uh, we wanted to kind of daylight some ideas that we're looking at. And I think the presentation's maybe about fifteen minutes, so if you, what we'd probably do is just get through the presentation and then we'll have time at the end with some. Type of questions, bring back.
Great.
Craig, you can take it there.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me here, I'm Craig Brasky, Senior Program Manager for Science and Graphics here at Open Space. And really just uh like Jeff and Dan said, a broad overview of the science program, then diving into the gateway signs. Um, so uh, you know, I'd just like to touch on this introduction slide here, uh, the top row really shows. Kind of some aging infrastructure that we have in our system, you know, we have a, a trailhead ID, restoration sign, a boundary sign. The lower row shows kind of where we're going with our upgrades, improvements and standardization of our sign designs. Next slide, please, man. So, uh, just some background on our science team, uh, we have five science team members, uh, we have two standard FTEs and three nine-month temps. Uh, general roles are sign planning, design, production, implementation and maintenance. Our twenty twenty-three budget is three hundred and seventy-eight thousand in operating and a hundred and three thousand in CIP funds. Uh, in our system, we have over thirty-two hundred individual signs and over eleven hundred structures. For guidance, we use templates, uh, O S M P and city branding, our sign manual, and that's all to ensure we deliver consistent service delivery. Uh, typical day-to-day includes scheduled maintenance, uh, emergent requests, I include uh, an example of graffiti that, you know, Rangers. Anybody in the system just alerts us, lets us know that's something that we had to clean up. And then also project implementation, just an example is installing a kiosk that we recently did up at the end car trailhead.
Oh, and Craig, we have a seasonal leash closure coming up.
Oh, yeah, we, we support that as well, you know, that's a kind of a two-pronged approach with, you know, like you said, giving a heads up to people who, you know. May frequent the system quite often and aren't quite aware or don't remember that it's coming up mid-August, so. That's something, uh, you know, tomorrow we'll be putting out just informational signage, give people a heads up. And uh, yeah, once it goes into full effect, we update our permanent signage, so just to, to touch on the seasonal bear dog leash requirements. So for long-term strategy, uh, we develop bid packages, kind of material planning, uh, budgeting and projections. And then developing work plans around projects and needs. So for uh some of our main sign team goals, uh, you know, really it's to enhance ecological protection and the visitor experience. So in this slide, uh, just as an example, we recently standardized our wildlife closure signage to. Uh, ensure there's more clear information and recognizable across the system when people come across these signs. You know, for wayfinding, just larger font, larger arrows, much more clear wayfinding directions for people navigating the system. It's a, a bare peak can be a tricky part of the system to navigate for people. So really just a, a comprehensive look at how we're uh helping people have successful navigation through our system. You know, and then we like to connect visitors uh through educational interpretive media, so we're developing one for uh Boulder Valley Ditches. Uh, that's just uh an example up here, uh, maybe difficult to see, but if anybody would like to see it, I could certainly share. So, you know, we also implement thoughtful, strategic, consistent sign placement. Example up here on the upper left is just um, you know, really a strategic approach to consolidate signs, minimize our infrastructure. Uh, while still saying the same message, um, you know, right here we have. On the left, wayfinding, dog regulations, bike regulations in separate directions of a trail. Instead, we put in a double wide, little bit larger of a sign structure and consolidated that wayfinding, consolidated the biking regulations. And uh, kept the uh dog regulations on there, so much cleaner look, uh, very effective for the trail user as well. Now, another, another goal is to expand the universal symbols and bilingual signage. Uh, so that would be the rules and regulation signs, much more transitioning to a much more symbol-based uh sign with bilingual on there. Also, one of our uh trailhead banners just down our kiosk, uh, you know, including, you know, a welcoming uh bilingual experience with that as well. And we're continuously improving and standardizing infrastructure within our system. Um, you know, an example here is ADA signage uh to meet Forest Service Trail Accessibility Guidelines. Uh, raising those up and then just comprehensively as we update trailheads and, you know, as we look at infrastructure, really. Uh, standardizing what we have in the system. And, you know, really, kind of a, a overall goal is to, to embrace a collaborative spirit and provide excellent internal and customer service. Uh, example here is that North Sky poster came from our O S M P open house this year. We had basically every uh service area represented there and we worked with uh quite a few individuals to really. You know, highlight what they're doing uh in O S M P by developing some uh really nice posters for people who attended the event. And I'd just like to tie in what we do with the master plan strategies. You know, the, what we do in regards to master plan is, does vary with the specific project. Most of the times we cover these five highlighted uh strategies. And we do support a wide variety of work groups and, you know, collaborative spirit across the different service areas, projects, initiatives. Uh, in doing so, we do touch quite a few other of the master plan strategies as well. So there's some specific uh science team focuses that we're really honing in on for this season. Um, you know, of course, upper left, you can see kind of an example of over signage and you would consider sign pollution. Or there's a lot of messages for a visitor to take, and sometimes it can distract from the main message or some of the really important information that we want to convey. You know, we've added some infrastructure pieces into uh our repertoire for what we can use. Uh, so just transitioning on that upper left, it goes from a clutter to kind of a tidy sign there using a message update board. Uh, that we've recently added to our standards. Um, you know, another focus is replacing an aging infrastructure with long-term, low-maintenance materials. And that upper right, you can see one of our old legacy wooden reg boards, regulation boards. Uh, now we're implementing, we have two left system-wide of the old regulation boards. Um, and those are corresponding with projects going on, uh, updates at trailheads. So we're working with trailheads as they're implementing, you know, their changes and improvements. We go in on the backside and, and, you know, kind of complete our part, along with a comprehensive sign plan for those updates. Then we're also working on bringing outdated signs and graphics to our current standards. You can see, uh, we're supporting the Undesignated Trail Program this year, uh, quite a focus of ours. You can see an old closed-for-restation sign damaged, uh, not very eye-catching. Uh, we have our new stay-on-trail restoration in progress, that one's a educational informative sign, we also have HCA signs and um. Uh, CMR eight-three-three signs, so, uh, those are more restrictive and kind of along that scale of implementation. of implementation. We're also trying to document best management practices for signing natural hazards. It's an annual request for stinging insects, poison ivy, and we're just really trying to understand and balance that signing and, you know, customer service and what our responsibility is in that. Another goal is continue the skilled expansion of the Sahill bilingual and symbol pilot, really using visitation data and community feedback to scale that implementation. We have quite a few kiosks and rules and regulations and structures system-wide that could really use that update. So we're going at it at a, at a very scaled approach. And last, we're going to be utilizing Beehive and Quarter Four to enhance our asset management and maintenance program for the signs team. So that was just a brief transition or a brief overview of the signs.
I remember that.
We were thinking that, wasn't that you driving to work on your Monday at work at Open Space?
Yeah, that's my search car.
What are you?
The city of Boulder.
Yeah. So, yeah, this is, you know, kind of our transition into the next half of this presentation, which is really going to be focusing on, you know, I think what, that was actually, you know, that was the old Wellington Gardens pipeline. And that's a very early on, you know, gateway sign right there for welcoming people coming to Boulder, visiting this area. So really, we're focusing on critical updates to infrastructure in our system. You know, considering our goals focused, current state of some of our legacy sign assets, right now is a really critical point to kind of continue our continuous improvement, standardization process to establish low maintenance, durable, but also functional and aesthetically appealing infrastructure. In 2023, we still have outdated gateway and location ID signs that were installed in the 1970s and 1980s. They're rapidly deteriorating at this point. You know, they're mainly in the Boulder Mountain Parks area, and they're from before the merger to even create Open Space and Mountain Parks as we know it. So here's some recent examples of failing outdated infrastructure. We're in the process of phasing these signs out due to, you know, the obvious issues that are occurring with them of falling over infrastructure, which really, if we're trying to convey information, is the last thing that we want. You know, at this point, we have metal-treated stained wooden kiosks to replace the regulation boards at trailheads. But we do need a solution for gateway and location ID signs, specifically the ones in the Boulder Mountain Parks area. We're making progress. Our free stations in the West TSA have been updated. You know, as I mentioned, we only have two of the old wooden regulation boards remaining in the system. And that's specifically at Gun Barrel and Cottonwood Trailhead. Cottonwood Trailhead is going through a revamp right now. We're going to be coming on the backside of that to update that. And then we're going to have one remaining, kind of going around that Gun Barrel implementation. We do have quite a few that still remain. Routed location ID signs, an example would be up at the top. That's the vehicle wayfinding as you approach Flagstaff Summit parking areas and kind of the split in the road. You know, and then that still follows kind of our old wooden regulation boards that we're looking at on that right side. And it's also very similar to Boulder County Parks and Open Space signage as well. So we also would like to differentiate ourselves, you know, where there's a clear delineation between properties and, and management responsibilities. And also following West TSA guidance, removing outdated and accurate signs replaces necessary with signs consistent with our sign manual. You know, sign manual gives us color, style, materials, design, et cetera, and outlines that. Here's a map showing where we do still have these aging gateway and location ID signs to Taqua Flagstaff area. We did update Fourth of July Trailhead and Buckingham Picnic area with the current trailhead IDs. So those were also part of that legacy program, but those have been phased out. So this is just a representation, representation of our current sign infrastructure. You know, they're showing, you know, longevity, durability, ease of maintenance. You know, there's a natural design that complements the landscape, landscape, rather than competing or detracting from the surrounding areas. From left to right is our trio, trio of powder-coated steel kiosk structures have treated stained sealed woods, wood. They are very durable and hold up for a long time. Farther over to the right, we have high-density urethane trailhead ID sign. Those are also proven to have a long lifespan in hard, harsh conditions and are very easy to maintain as well. And addition, you can see on our double wide, single wide, and Paul Bunyan post, we have our update message boards, which are steel-framed. They have replaceable treated stained wooden pieces that are also very convenient to replace if they do age. So, you know, we also acknowledge and understand that the, the community in OSMP ties to the legacy signage. You know, we want to honor the past with our new standards. And, you know, that's something that we definitely acknowledge. And, you know, so let's just look at options that tie the past to our current sign standards. So just like to start off with kind of an image of CCC workers there checking out the.
And you stand there on the left.
We thought there was a cigarette there? Smoke break already?
That's rough work. These are some gentlemen building a CCC-era stone retaining wall, likely on Flagstaff near Panorama Point halfway house area. And, you know, here's in front of Gregory Canyon, we still have some existing legacy. And actually, the inscription on that center stone is 1919 is when that was installed. So that's just before the bend going up Flagstaff, kind of near the Gregory entrance. So this is really a testament to resilient durable materials being used for signage and infrastructure within the system. So the concept of using resilient, low-maintenance infrastructure leads us into, you know, our most immediate visible sign infrastructure need, in my opinion. And it's a great opportunity to update the deteriorating gateway monument sign in Chautauqua Meadow, right there at the base of Flagstaff Road. You know, we, rather than allow it to further deteriorate or maintain as-is or replace in kind, we're proposing to create a durable eye-catching sign that ties into the surroundings. We feel that it would be the most prudent and can establish new designs based off of what we do off, from what I consider our flagship sign. I'd like to include some detailed photos of the current condition of that flagship sign. As you can see, the wood is deteriorating, bowing, upper right is rotting away. You know, that's an example on the lower left of our high-density urethane, which is holding up very well. Also, we do have some masonry and rock work that we do have to do as well in preparation for an update to this sign. But with that being done, it should, you know, become a, again, a very durable piece. And, you know, we do have CIP funds allocated for this upgrade. And there's also requests for additional out-year funds to work on other gateway and ID, location ID signs, and we'll touch on that in a little bit. For those who are unfamiliar, we have a 3D rendering of the, the sign as it is. You know, that's, you know, really its current state. You know, it's a 3D, tough to tell, but yeah, it's just kind of approaching Flagstaff Road right there.
I got to tell you, when I showed my wife the memo, the picture in the memo, she was convinced that the guy in the center was I. I said, that's, there's no way. And, yeah. Anyway, yeah, she was, she was sure that was, that was I.
It's actually one of, one of my team members.
I said, I don't know exactly who that is, but I know it is not I.
Spry young man.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, here is our proposed design and replacement of that sign. We discussed several different options from the scale of removing altogether, let it further deteriorate, all the way to, you know, kind of a digital display board. You know, we went through the whole plethora of options that we had for an update on this sign. You know, we decided on a steel sign with laser cut imagery of the flatirons. And, you know, that captures the essence of the area. And it would be that existing stone pillar and stone base would be restored, you know, to its original condition and intent. And, you know, we worked with the rec management committee to vet this design. Went through a pretty thorough process. Vet management, the rec management committee is planning rangers, education and outreach, ecology, trails, facility and business services. So representatives from a lot of different work groups within OSMP had some input and, and, you know, were able to voice their opinions on what we're planning and proposing. The selected option, it's durable, low-maintenance needs, welcomes visitors, provides a sense of place, ties to the essence of the location. You know, it honors the past by keeping the stonework. We have the nostalgic National Park Service font, and it's also very similar to that original Boulder Gateway sign that was on the pipeline crossing Boulder or Broadway. And it also fits our current standards using resilient materials and a contemporary design. And just for, you know, some visuals, here's a 3D rendering of the backside of the current gateway sign. And this would be the backside of our proposed sign, again, capturing the essence of the area with the flatirons. Also, you know, adding a message showing gratitude to visitors for their shared stewardship of the land. So just to kind of wrap up and, you know, give a parting take of what we're proposing, on that upper left would be the proposed gateway monument. And in the center, upper center would be some future concepts, maybe some additional gateway signs based off of that monument design. In those two images, one would be kind of in that Flagstaff-Chautauqua, capturing the essence of the flatirons. On the right is, you know, would be maybe in an agricultural section. It has a barn fence and some fields represented down there. So, you know, gateway to welcome people to sections and systems, you know, within our, within our OSMP system. Then we do have our existing trailhead sign there, and also some proposed location ID signs that would be based off of that design, also made of high-density urethane. And those would be more of location IDs and kind of that vehicle wayfinding. That brings me to the end of the presentation. Thank you for your time. Glad I could be here and sharing some of these ideas that we have for gateway signs and just sharing the program background as well. At this point, just like to open it up to some feedback questions on sign program or, you know, especially our gateway sign proposal.
Thank you very much, Craig. Appreciate it. That was very informative. Do board members have any questions or comments?
I, I had one. In the packet, in the bottom left of the sign, it says Homeland of Ute, Rappahoe, and Cheyenne. But it looked like in the ones you're showing up there, it had something different there.
Yeah, just in our discussion, that was, you know, chosen, it's, you know, very, you know, we're engaging 16 different tribes. We don't want to just focus on three, you know, it may, might not be representative of everybody. I also feel that, you know, it's a very short land acknowledgement, may not be taken as a heartfelt message. So instead, we put in our enjoy and protect message instead.
I'm glad to hear that. I was going to make a suggestion that we might want to rethink that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it was a well-meaning draft from staff, but when we started to interact with those of us that had that tribal engagement background, we instantly caught some of those. So, yeah.
Great. Well, thanks. And thanks very much for the, the information. I think that what you're proposing or doing is, is really good. The one suggestion I have is that I think we ought to have Boulder Open Space and Mountain Parks on the sign because Boulder is the first open space program. We ought to take pride and promote that, that, you know, this is the Boulder Open Space. It's not Jeffco, it's not Boulder County, it's not Laramie County. This is Boulder Open Space and Mountain Parks. And so that would be my suggestion. And I don't know, you'll have to figure it out, but whether you have to do away with the word entering in order to get that there. But if you do, my feeling would be that it's more important to have Boulder than to have entering. And so that would be my suggestion. The other thing is, I had a couple of things. If we do want to put something on there, I want to be mindful that the open space and mountain parks programs were really set up to protect the land. And so for me, something like where plains meet the mountains or, you know, there's some, there's some kind of natural element in, in the message or where, what I have, it's the preserving natural and cultural communities or something like that. So we recognize the, the historical, you know, human presence, but also don't ignore, you know, the natural importance, which was really the underlying reason for setting up the, the program initially. So anyway, but I definitely think you're, you're doing great work and going in the right direction. So congratulations and keep it up. But I think we ought to recognize Boulder. You know, we ought to promote that because that's an important part of the program.
Yeah, you're not the only one to, you know, bring that up, I think. Come up in conversations as well. And, you know, as far as, you know, the exact messaging on that sign, that's, you know, we're kind of tweaking that in. It's mainly the, the conversion to, you know, the design of the sign itself and the structure. So, yeah, we'll certainly, you know, City of Boulder, Open Space and Mountain Parks, I think is a lot more appropriate than entering.
Right. Yeah. Great. Thanks. Michelle or Brady, do you have any comments or questions?
Brady? Yeah, I agree with Dave's comment. And I just, Craig, great presentation. Change is hard. You're going to get pushback. You've given this a hell of a lot of thought. I just appreciate that. I think, I think the sign's beautiful. You know, for what it's worth, I like the font. It evokes old time. I don't know. I think you nailed it. I agree with the City of Boulder or the Boulder edition. One thing I wanted to, this is very specific. There's a new-ish, I don't know how new it is, but there's a phenomenon of scrambling in the flatirons. And I don't know how many of you have watched a world-class athlete with sticky rubber run up the second flatiron like it was a sidewalk. And they look like a regular person with regular shoes on, and they're not a regular person, and they don't have regular shoes on. And regular people look at it and go, I think I could do that. And in fact, there's been days where I've been going up the second flatiron and I see a few people in street shoes, shoes that me as a climber of over 30 years wouldn't dream of being. Shoes that me as a climber of over thirty years wouldn't dream of being up there. And it's probably their first or second climbing experience ever. And it's terrifying. And there are accidents. I mean, we we can talk to Rocky Mountain, you know, search and rescue about that. But that being said, what am I getting at? What I'm getting at is, you know, there's only so much that signs can do to protect the public from themselves. But when it comes to the second, potentially the first flood, unless so the third, because it's hard to get to. You really have to kind of get there and by the time you show up, the exposure is in instantly obvious. You're like, whoa, you know, I think, but whereas on the first and especially the second, you see people running up, you're like, God, I could do that. And before you know it, you're in fatal fall territory. And I think the sign that exists there is a little milquetoast. And I think we have an opportunity to be very explicit. People have died here doing what you're thinking about doing. You know, I I don't know. Again, you you have to, you have to kind of weigh it within the context of everything else. I think we have the opportunity to save some lives by being pretty damn clear with that sign that the people that you may have seen go by are likely experienced people with specialized gear, even if they're going fast. I don't know. I I would be happy to have a longer conversation with you offline, but I just wanted to highlight that. It's something I've discussed a little bit within the climbing community. I'm sure there's going to be differences of opinion. Again, change is hard. But I think we have an opportunity to save some lives there. And, uh, and and if you'd like to explore that further, I'd welcome a sidebar conversation.
Yeah, yeah. Just thinking of that sign that you're talking about at the base of the second flat iron, I believe we've replaced that three times just to vandalism alone. It's very scratched up. It's in a highly traveled area. You know, we've discussed updating that sign internally. And, uh, yeah, I agree with you. It'd be a great opportunity to give people a real message, uh, you know, rather than kind of skirting around it or, you know, being light on the language and, you know, it makes the news all the time. Or if we're out at, you know, baseline road or we're wanting to get onto Blue Bell Road and there's search and rescue operations in progress. A lot of times it's the first or second flat iron where where that's occurring. So, yeah, I agree with you, Brady. I I think it's time for some more direct language on that.
There's many examples across different agencies. You've probably been to like the Barrow Bells, Brady, you know, there's a big site, so it's the deadly bells. It talks about how many fatalities, it's pretty ominous and ripping, um, so we can look at other.
Yeah, you can overdo it, but I I think my 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 vote is we we dial it up a few notches at least. So I appreciate the openness to it. Yep, thanks.
We could go certain death if you do this in street shoes. How about that?
No flip flops allowed.
On that note, I was just wondering, is the the staff has or the work group is considered using more humor in its signage? I've seen other communities, of course, I don't know how funny Boulder is, but I've seen other communities do it pretty well. We take ourselves a little too seriously. But, um, I've seen other communities do it really well. I mean, with related to dog regulations and other things. And it's just like, oh, that's funny. And now it got caught my attention. And yeah, that's right. That's a dumb move. I I don't know if if that's something that you are able to incorporate. I have just two other comments in there or slash questions. I've seen the the no e-bike or e-bike symbols differ depending on land managers. They kind of show a plug. Is there some universal sign? And I haven't been out in the community much, so I don't know what signs exist now to allow e-bikes and to disallow, to communicate that e-bikes are are not allowed. And I think this was answered last year when we talked about this, is that you're you're steering away from, I'm colorblind, Craig. You're steering away from color coding signs. Is that right? Trying to make them easier to see in the maps and stuff and easier to see with that with hash marks and things like that.
Yeah, I know, uh, just in talking with G I S, that's a focus with them. And I believe there's, uh, actually a timeframe where they do need to, you know, for color blindness and things like that. As far as signage, we we try to have our symbols, you know, pretty clear, uh, with or without colors. So what we're using right now, for example, like the e-bikes, um, we do differ from surrounding agencies and nobody really has a, you know, universal symbol for e-bikes. Uh, you know, what we have is basically a E in the back tire, uh, with a lightning bolt there. And then, uh, for the no e-bikes, it's just a hash mark, um, you know, a slash mark through it. We did inquire with other land managed, the parks, the Boulder County Parks and Open Space. You know, we've already had a design that was created in twenty twenty. We did kind of want to make it universal as it transitioned from our trails onto Boulder Parks and Open Space, uh, the county. But we decided to just keep our symbol. We thought it was clear, direct. And that's what we implemented with the with the transition on July first.
Are are all the signs out that you plan on planting?
Yeah. So we, you know, we basically updated all of the bikes allowed signs with, uh, the e-bikes and human powered bikes allowed. And then at those transition points, uh, you know, basically from, you know, the South TSA over to the West TSA, at those thresholds, we put no e-bikes allowed. Human powered bikes only at those transition points. And that was completed pretty rapidly, uh, you know, within the first week of July, we had all of those posted.
Okay. Yeah, I need to get out there, get out to like Flatiron Vista and see what they look like.
So Flatiron Vista would, that would be on that cusp, kind of that transition point, uh, on the east side of Highway ninety three, you'll see, uh, extensive e-bikes allowed signage over there.
But when you get over to Flatirons Vista, you have no e-bikes allowed? Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, at the trailhead, because that's where people will be unloading them, right? If they are confused that they're not allowed over there.
Yeah, at the trailhead and then on the on the connector trail from Greenbell Plateau to Flatirons Vista, we also have it there. And also from Marshall Mesa to the community ditch where you're getting over towards Doughty Draw. That's also a threshold point that we have signed where e-bikes allowed ends.
Thanks. I'll get out a little bit more and check those out. Um, I do think that just piloting a use, you know, use of humor in some of the signs and just see how they resonate with people just might be a good exercise.
So, so we did have a wide array of, uh, you know, picking up dog waste signs. And a lot of them, you know, developed kind of into, uh, you know, there is no poop fairy and pictures of a poop fairy or, you know, a a dog cleaning up its its own poop and I I I thought it was all right. I mean, the taste, the taste, maybe, I don't know. You know, some better graphics would have been, you know, some really impactful graphics.
We hire a comedian.
A consultant, a consultant comedian.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta switch it up, Jeff. You gotta keep people guessing. You gotta keep people guessing.
Just get their attention though. I mean, that's the main point is to get their attention, right?
Actually, Michelle, I just want to say, I actually think you're like, like, if if the, if the message is like loosen up a little bit, take a risk, do something funny. I mean, I think it's, I I I agree with that in theory and, um, and, yeah, I don't know, we could hire a comedian.
Well, I see them in the mountain communities and I think people take themselves less seriously up there.
Yeah. And I would, you know, just on on those poop fairy signs, you know, I I just don't know if, uh, you know, compliance increased or there was any like tangible resonance with those. And, you know, I think they may have been phased out in, you know, early two thousand teens. And that may have been because of, you know, a lack of effectiveness of those signs. And it's always something we can, you know, go after and pilot and see if if humor actually resonates and increases measurable compliance or, you know, or just, you know, the the user experience or visitor experience.
Well, on that note, I think we'll, uh, close this conversation and thank you very much.
Yeah.
Uh, appreciate it. Um, and it looks good.
Yeah, yeah. Really appreciate the feedback because, uh, I think Brady's right is that whatever we do up there, we'll have some detractors and
Right.
and some applause. And so it's it's really helpful for us to get your feedback.
Great.
Uh, so you're still on Dan for?
Yeah, just got a, uh, kind of a rapid fire few items. Just wanted to let you know that, uh, at the end of July, that we hosted, uh, representatives from the Northern Cheyenne, Northern Arapaho and Southern Arapaho and Cheyenne tribes to continue our consultation on our Fort Chambers poor farm land management plan. They were here for two days. Uh, all all three tribes were well represented, uh, with two representatives. Uh, we, uh, were out in the field for a couple of hours getting, uh, so they could get a a better understanding of feel for the property. The reason I'm updating you verbally at this point is because we're in transition between trying to get our notes that we captured approved by them before we release them. But we do plan on providing you with a written update in September of how that meeting went. Dave joined us for lunch to thank them for, uh, coming to Boulder, but we had a really rich, uh, conversation. I think we're we're moving forward with some unanimous thoughts from the tribal perspective. And we look forward to updating you on that. But just want to let you know that, uh, that meeting did happen. Just want to let you know that on seven thirty one, we celebrated World Ranger Day. I had the opportunity to join our our ranger staff along with a number of other rangers from, uh, City of Longmont, City of Lewisville, uh, Boulder County, uh, CPW. And it was just a a great, uh, celebration, uh, to applaud their work that they do each and every day. And we were out at, uh, Eldo State Park for that. Just want to let you know that Cottonwood Trailhead is being renovated and it is temporarily closed while we go through the renovations. We're going to, Craig may may note that our last thing would be coming back and, uh, updating signage. But we're also renovating, uh, the parking area and, uh, making upgrades. And eventually we get to the kiosks, just an FYI on that. Last timeframe for fully completion.
Actually, uh, well, at this point ahead of schedule and, you know, probably looking to reopen the trailhead hopefully by the end of August.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Great.
I think it was originally four to six weeks and it's moving at a pace where it's maybe two to three, three being, you know, ideal.
Yeah.
Labor Day.
Right.
Uh, last Saturday, we sort of kicked out in a more of a formal way, our community engagement and outreach effort with City of Boulder's Community Wildfire Protection Plan update. Um, we had about forty attendees, uh, Chris Warner and Carrie Webster represented our department. And Chris said there was a lot of great conversation, a lot of interaction. And some of open space questions as well as home hardening and that type of stuff. Uh, we have an agenda item coming up in the fall to update you on that CWPP planning process and, uh, look forward to doing that with you. And I already mentioned that, uh, kind of pay attention to your emails. We'll try to get that date for that Postac OSPT joint meeting together. We have got both representatives of of our coordinators that are talking to each other now. And imagine that we'll be reaching out to you fairly shortly to try to see if we can get some common dates for that. And I'll look forward to doing that. Uh, I know Dave, a suggestion of getting the two boards together was something that you've been kind of talking about for a number of years. I met with Teresa Glawicki, the director, my counterpart over Boulder County. She thought it was a great idea. We instantly came up with that common theme of, she said, how about restoration? I said, well, we got a field trip in seventy two hours on restoration. So that's one reason why we decided to postpone it, um, because we're doing a lot of collective work at our various sites along Lower Boulder Creek. So look forward to showing you that. And, uh, I already mentioned, but just to reiterate that tomorrow night, uh, there will be a thirty minute public hearing item at council to appoint, uh, vacant seats for various boards and commissions, including R one vacancy and open space. So, uh,
You know what time about that?
That is, it was a study session night, so they included a thirty minute special meeting ahead of the study session. So it'll be right from six to six thirty.
Okay. Televised, is that?
Yeah, I mean, there's still a way to participate like we're doing now on year.
Right.
Yeah. So.
Great.
All right. Those are my updates.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there anything else that we need to talk about or consider? Well, then I will declare this meeting adjourned and thank you very much, everyone, for your participation.
Nice shot, finishing early.
Yeah, new record, Dave.